All right, I'd like to call to order this special city council meeting of Wednesday, December 1st, 2021. If we could all rise for collective allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Barb, will you call the roll for this evening, please?
Lambion.
President.
Pratt.
President.
Bellinger.
President.
Siebel. Ryan.
President.
Gilroy.
Present.
Hanson.
Present.
All right, I did not receive notice from Mr. Siebel. I don't know if possibly Holly did in her email or something, so...
I'll check when I continue to...
I'm like, I'm up to no excuse.
Thank you. All right, do you want to support?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Now I'm looking for approval of the agenda for this evening.
Motion approved, agenda estimated.
Second.
Thank you.
Can I ask that the...
Yes, absolutely, no, please do.
Amendment, please?
Yes.
Last name of the first candidate only has one N, not two.
Okay.
I'll add that friendly amendment for Mr. Hanifin to have one N, not two.
H-A-N-I-F-A-A.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, with that being said, all those in favor with the friendly amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. I don't see anybody out in our audience, so with that being said, we will move right into our city manager second interviews. We do have two candidates that we have asked back. We actually had three. We had one withdrawn, his name from consideration. So this evening, our 6:00 PM candidate will be John Hanifin and our 7:00 PM candidate will be John Stokels. And then after those two interviews, we'll move on to our action items. So Barb, would you please bring in our first candidate?
Hello again.
Hello, John, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Great, well, have a seat, we'll let you get settled and we'll go from there. All right, John, well, thank you so much for coming back for this second round of interviews. I'm just gonna go over a couple, you know, housekeeping items and how this evening will work. And of course, for our viewers as well, but we just want to thank you again for coming back. We're excited to have you here. So we're gonna have several questions like we did on that first round. We're gonna have about 60 minutes of time together this evening and for us to continue to get to know you and for you to know us. And with these questions, again, you'll see us taking notes so that we can remember what we need to remember. And we're gonna have the opportunity, we're gonna be more flexible, more fluid with these questions. So we're gonna state the questions as it is, but the council members will be able to ask follow-up questions through their answers.
Okay.
And then again, we're gonna give you the ability to ask questions of us at the end.
Okay.
So we're gonna do it round and round in style, so just go ahead and jump right in and others will ask the first one. So this is kind of a fun question for us. We'd like to get to know you a little, we'd like to know a little bit more about you as an individual.
Okay.
What occupies your time outside of work?
So outside of work, I have three kids and two of them are in college, one is still in high school. And I do coach basketball, AAU basketball. And those of you who know basketball or sports these days, it's a, when you're not in season, it's a, it's a pretty intense endeavor. So that's primarily what I do. And I did that for my other kids too. Something I picked up in really the last seven years or so. Hopefully, all of you were home watching curling a couple of weeks ago during the Olympic trials.
Yeah.
We can talk about that, if I get the job, I can tell you the whole story, but something I picked up. And so we have a curling group. Primarily, we curl at the Detroit Curling Club in Ferndale. We do that, I'll have a dozen times a winter and then, because Chelsea does have an ice arena, so we're able to start some curling events there. And using those skills, we were able to turn that into a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. So I actually teach curling.
Wow.
If that's something you're interested in, regardless of how this goes, I'd love to have you. So those are the things that, you know, sort of the active type things that I do. My wife and I like to travel. I'm fortunate enough to go overseas a couple of times, but we really love the state of Michigan. We're both from here and so we enjoy going to like every possible small town. Full disclosure, I've been to Old Nation many times. It's one of the things we like to do. And again, but that's, breweries really give you a sense of like the local community or we try to, so...
Sure.
And then, you know, I'm still an avid reader, read a lot, listen to all kinds of music. My father is a music teacher, but I'm the only one who doesn't sing or play an instrument, but I appreciate music. Fortunately, my kids all pick it up, so...
Right.
So again, you know, and I, this is gonna sound like a corny playing the audience the answer, but I really love this profession. And so most of the time, this isn't work, you know. I love going to parts meetings or planning permission meetings. I love doing that, so I keep my time busy. And as I think I said the last time, you know, I'm not involved in like 100 million different things, the things that I'm involved in, I really enjoy.
So I really, this is gonna be the first follow-up. What attracted you to curling? And I just, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those unique sports.
Sure.
You sit there and you watch, you're like, oh my gosh. But what, what attracted you to that?
Well, surprisingly, it's not as impactful as basketball, maybe.
Right.
Basketball anymore, I still coach, I said, but we were sitting around after a youth basketball tournament. My older son was in sixth grade and curling was on TV and the people we were with, they're like, hey, you ever see that sport? And like, you know, last time I saw that, my wife and I, we were in Toronto. And my wife was getting ready, we got the Royal York, which sounds fancy, but it's not. It's a, it's a nice place, but it's not super fancy. And I'm watching the television and, you know, it's a big deal in Canada. And the announcer said, they compared the guy who's curling to the Michael Jordan of curling. And I'm like, what? You're just sliding, you're holding a 42-pound stone down a hundred and twenty yards, but they referenced him as the Michael Jordan of curling and kind of marrying up the basketball and curling. So anyway, back to that conversation at the tournament, we're like, well, we need to try that. And so, you know, there's not a lot of places to do that.
Sure.
There's a few more now in Michigan, but so, so that was it. We set up the event and we went and we were all awful and felt a lot, but nobody, nobody cracked their skull, so... So yeah, we just started going more and more often and that's it, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a great conversation starter, I think.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so where do you see yourself in five years? What will you be doing that is important to you and how will you make that happen?
Well, ideally, in five years, I'll be here in helping the community continue to thrive. Hopefully, being a mentor for the staff that are here. You have, you have staff that have served for a long time, but you know, the reality is there, some of them are significantly younger than I am. So mentoring them and hopefully positioning the community to continue to thrive while we have that five years.
Any follow-ups? Okay. Carrie, you are next.
How do you stay current with your role as a municipality leader, city manager? Do you belong to any professional organizations or do you participate in professional development, continuing education opportunities and so forth?
Yeah, all of the above. The great thing about the, being in the internet era is having, we still have an old school kind of this serve of the Michigan Municipal Executives. And that's a great information exchange. There's a daily sharing of information and that's from communities from 800 people to, you know, 800,000. And it's specific Michigan, so that's one way on the daily. And then I belong to Empara, which is a public employment labor relations association. And so they have, they regularly have professional development and training. You know, I attend, I don't attend every, there's a winter institute for, for the MML and MME. And there's also the spring institute and the annual conference. And I usually go to about one out of three of those. When I was younger, I used to go more often, but again, with the, the adren of, of the ability to share information fairly easily and regularly. I got an email yesterday from somebody asking about a particular wastewater consultant I use for. And I didn't know this person before, but because, you know, my name's easy to find and, you know, it's pretty easy to, to share that information exchange. So, so it's really, it's a, you know, it's, there's, on the daily, it's sharing information. And the topics can be, you know, as simple as, hey, there's a new street sweeper to, you know, broad-based OPEB reform or, you know, most recently by short-term rental policies. And that's really a hot topic. And finally, the Michigan Municipal League in our communities I've always worked in have always belonged to that. I assume you belong to that too. It's a great resource. Both, both like, they have a whole series of one-pagers that are great for, for folks, but they're also a great resource. You can call them up and regularly know them.
John, would you, oh, sorry, go ahead, no.
I, I...
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the things in your existing budget where you work now, what type of training budget do you put together for your staff and for the departments?
Yeah, sure, so from department to department, it's gonna vary because there's some like, like water and wastewater have, they have licensed departments. So their budgets, their budget's larger, so it's anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 total. And that's, that's enough to obviously meet those needs. But if there's a particular aspect, somebody wants to make a budget request, then we just ask them to do the research and then we budget appropriately. You know, the unfortunate part with, with police officers, the state of Michigan only allows about $54 per officer for training. So you really have to make sure you have enough budget in your police budget. Because as we all know, that's, that's an ever-changing profession. And all officers are MCO certified, which is the great first step, but it's that follow-up training. And so, and again, it's usually anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 per employee. But keep, that sounds like a lot, but keep in mind, the departments are, you know, they're not massive. They're not, there's not 30 or 40, there's, you know, five to 10 per, per department.
That was a great question and that, I'm gonna follow up with that and...
Please, no.
Oh, can I?
No, that's fine, go.
Oh, I was just gonna say, do you support and encourage staff to pursue continuing education associations and professional development?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you want, you want an educated staff, you want your staff to, to participate in their state organizations. I will say, I'm sometimes a little frosty about taking on too much of a leadership role in those because those groups can, and I've done that in past, but they can be real time lasters and take you away from your community. I think everybody should serve at some point, but you know, if you're, if you're chief of police is the head of the MIACP, you know, for 15, 20 years running, something's kind of not right. They're not spending enough time in town, but...
Okay.
But as far as, yeah, absolutely, support that 100% because you want better employees, you want them better educated and you want them to have the best resources. And also the networking aspect, if you don't know something, it's a lot easier to call, it's, you can always call, cold call someone or cold email them, but it's a lot better if like, I'll use Holly for example, Holly Thompson. You know, she knows the clerk of Brighton, she's met her at a conference. She can call her and say, hey, what do you guys do here in this scenario? Or the Ingham County Clerk, yeah, I assume there's a pretty active county clerk's association, which is different than like being part of the Michigan Association of Clerks because that's where I think you learn the most is when you're with your peer group and in your peer county or peer communities.
Great, thank you. No, did you have another follow-up to that?
Nope, nope, but I'm writing for the fourth question.
All right, sounds good.
This is pretty straightforward. Why do you want this job?
Yeah, that's, that's a $64 question, right?
Right.
So I've had a great tenure and a great career in municipal government. I've had a great experience in Chelsea. And I want to underscore that I'm not running from anything and I had a contract renewed recently. But when this opportunity came up, I've always thought highly of Williamson and I wanted to be here. And I think I mentioned, there's, there's a lot of jobs open. There's a job just about, Syle Township is about three miles from where I currently live. I have no interest in that job because I wanted to be here. And if this job wasn't open, I wouldn't be actively interviewing anywhere else. This is where I wanted to be. And, and I, you know, I talked at length the last time about, you know, I guess my background and coming here and being here. And I, my son is a couple of, has had a couple of teammates in basketball in the past from Williamson. I've spent a lot of time here and it's just a, it's a great community. It's the kind of community that fits, you know, I guess my lifestyle and my profile. And again, I'm very proud and happy of the work I've done in Chelsea, but I think there's a, there's some great opportunity here in Williamson. I think that, that my skill set really matches up to some of the needs that you have, whether it's wastewater infrastructure or, you know, your economic development with the industrial park. You know, making sure that you preserve your historic neighborhoods. You know, my DDA experience with Dexter and Chelsea, you know, our downtowns are very similar. Chelsea more than, more than Dexter because I've been in a community where a state highway is your main street and knowing the challenges that come with that. So it's really my, my desire to be here in this place.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up? All right, Tom?
Follow-up, for what it's worth, that was my main question for you tonight.
I appreciate that.
It is straightforward.
You didn't get to grill me the last time, so I'm ready for you to fire away with that.
All right, John, have you ever been terminated or asked to resign?
Never.
Tell us about that. Never. Perfect.
Easy.
Easy answer.
All right.
If we call on the people who have worked with you over the years, what will they tell us about you?
Yeah, so now I'm trying to balance exactly what I told you last time. That I'm a caring person, I'm a leader, that, that I put the, the job and the community sometimes before myself, that I'm approachable, that I'm not someone who, I don't claim to know everything about every aspect of the municipality and that, you know, I let the folks that are experts in the organization do their job. I'm not gonna know more than someone who have 31 years of experience at the Michigan State Police. But I think what they'd also tell you is that I'm additive to those folks, that, you know, what I can support is, because I have done this for a while, I've seen just about every possible thing you can see in a municipality. You know, even though I've worked in, you know, small to medium-sized municipalities, but they would say that I really, I care about people, I care about the job. I don't, I don't do anything to put the community in a bad spot or an embarrassing spot. I do have, I am a high-energy person, you know, I'm gonna tell you, I watched the tape the last time, I'm like, I've gotta promise not to bang the table. Yeah, I know you noticed that, I don't know how you couldn't, so, but that's, that's me, because I'm passionate about this. And I think they would say that too.
Can I do a follow-up?
Yes, you can.
So if we ask them a very similar question, also saying, is what, what thing could he improve upon himself? What might they say?
Yeah, I, I think, I think sometimes that I have a personality that initially can be overwhelming for folks.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, we're on number seven. Okay, I'll tell you how many we have. I guess we'll be doing okay. We have 20 and then there's a mayor's follow-up page. All right. From what you've learned about us, what do you think our two biggest challenges will be in the next three years? How would you tackle them? Who would you involve and what process will you follow? And you need me to repeat that? I'm happy to.
Yeah, so the next three years, I mean, your infrastructure, you know, specifically water and wastewater. And how we tackle that, we did obviously involve the, you know, the public works and I know you have a wastewater superintendent. I'm not sure if you have a water, but if you do, we certainly would involve them on the front end. And, you know, we would start, I talked a lot about strategic planning last time this year. I actually, I have an example that I customized for Williamson, so I'll walk this up in a second.
Thank you.
I don't know this answer. So it would start there and then, you know, as we get, the timing this, for you, I will say, for hiring someone is almost perfect because you're on a July 1 fiscal year, so, you know, you really start your budget prep about now. So it would start with, with those folks because that wastewater and water infrastructure piece is the most critical. So formulate a plan, you know, do some budget validation, obviously, you know, what, how did our rates, what's our research or how did we land on that? What can we accommodate? You know, if there is a large public works project in the offing, you already know that. I mean, I could find that anywhere in my research, but I'll just use numbers. If you have an $8 million wastewater plant, you don't, you don't have $8 million to spend for that, so... But that doesn't scare me because I've been through that before. And I went through that with the backstory of the community was losing a lawsuit based on the lack of wastewater capacity. So we were gonna lose the lawsuit, which we did, and then we, should I get it changed yet? But I couldn't, I could always dis, I wouldn't make, but you know, it happened, so we had to deal with it. And then we had to figure out a way to budget for a $12 million plan and we didn't have the resources to do that, so... So I had direct experience with that, but it's involving the people on a day-to-day, coming up with a plan, sharing that information with council regularly as soon as possible. So I think that's a critical thing. And then I also, I think the vacancy, you know, the vacant land in the industrial park, I know, you know, doing my research, I know that's important to all of you and I think you have an industrial park for a reason, right? You didn't, you're not gonna, you know, start putting homes there next to light manufacturing, so... And that's really, I've used this term before, that's really an all-call. I mean, so it starts with, you've had some discussions about what you'd like to see there, you know, getting that research from council, working with the community development. I know you, you use consultants in the past. I'm not sure, you don't have an on-staff community development person, which, which is fine, it doesn't, you probably don't need one, frankly. But working with LEAP, with the Lansing Economic Area Partnership, which is kind of a backward acronym, so it's always hard for me to say that. But working with them and again, this is another, in Chelsea, we had some of the same issues. We had vacant industrial park spots, we had a, we had an auto in-amber machine closed and it was vacant for a while. And so we worked with Inover Spark, which would be a similar organization to LEAP and said, hey, you know, we're, we know we're on the far edges of the service area, but it's, it's time, you know. You've probably been, LEAP's probably been locating, inciting, you know, different companies and helping them move and getting them incentivized. It's, it's our time to do that and, and you know, we're right off the highway, we have the resources. We're fixing our infrastructure if that was a barrier, so... And then it's keeping all of you involved. I don't know how often you use work or study sessions, but you know, both of those are prime. Hopefully, they're not a series, you know, you don't wanna have a whole nother subset of meetings, but if you have to, you have to. If you, if you, if you wanna dive in from, you know, on the, on the third Monday from, you may have a meeting that night, let's go Wednesday. Yeah, if you wanna dive in from 6:00 to 9:00, just about the industrial park and this is where we're at, this is how we're gonna make it happen. And you have to have the mindset, those two key issues. The question before was asked about threats. To me, those aren't threats because if we're gonna decide collectively to do those, then we're gonna do them. They're not, they're not a threat anymore. We've, we've removed the threat. It's gonna be a lot of hard work, but we've removed the threat. That's how I go about approaching this.
All right, thank you. Any follow-ups?
Yeah, quick follow-up?
Yes, absolutely, Carrie.
The other thing that I think is a significant challenge for us is the Williamson Road overlay, the planning for that section out there by the interstate, interstate. Where would you see, is this another big place?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Where do you see that going? Where, if you were, you could just make it the way you want to right now, what would it look like?
You're talking about heading towards the highway and...
Yeah, so between the highway to, I don't know where you drove in from, but essentially to the tractor supply on the road there. We have a Williamson overlay district, which theoretically is supposed to be residential, commercial, like hybrid system.
Right.
We have, for a long time, contemplated developing that to create a new, like wherever other exits has something.
Sure.
We haven't successfully done that yet, so...
We're the last empty exit between Brighton and Lansing.
That's right.
So, I guess the question is, how would you address helping that?
Yeah, so I would say that, you know, that with the overlay, I mean, that, that sets the zoning, right?
Yeah, great question.
And so, so with that zoning, is it giving you what you want? And I haven't read, I haven't read the overlay, but I mean, I know what it means and I can certainly read it. But we gotta make sure that it says what we want it to say and it's gonna attract the things that we want to attract. And then as far as my, my individual vision, you know, I guess I don't, I don't have, I don't exactly what you're talking about. The Marandors is just on the, on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
So, you used to have a reindeer there, didn't they?
Yes, it did, it's a good memory, definitely good, good memory.
So making sure that it looks like how you want it to look like and sometimes, and then you have to say, what's, what's, what is our highest and best use? What is, you know, and you're the, you're the elected representatives of the town, right? What do they want through you? What do they want it to look like? Because there are, sometimes there's just, there are practical realities. I mean, you know, everybody, everybody would want a golf course, right? But they think they would, right? Or, or, or an ice arena, but is there a practical hardship? And so that goes back to the zoning ordinance. And then it is, it's meeting with communities that if there's something you've seen somewhere, I mean, that's, that's the greatest way. You went and saw it, let's bring that here. So, you know, if there's a, if there's a consensus point that, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna pick a town. I'm just picking Freeland and I've never even been there, Freeland. If there's something in Freeland you like and that's what we like for, how do they do it? And then let's, let's make it happen here.
Sure. I call that R and D, ripoff and duplicate.
Yeah, that's exactly. Less like there was one ordinance written, you know, three, 10 years ago and it's just been, you know, cut and paste it over time, so...
Appreciate that, Carrie, good question, thank you.
All right. How will you strengthen relations between the city and Williamson, or, I mean, townships and service organizations?
Yeah, that's also, that's also a critical piece because, you know, back to the, this right question. With Wheatfield and Williamson Township, you have to have good relations. And I know you have some established 425s, I haven't read them because I couldn't find them anywhere, but I know with the, you're in the fire authority, right? So that's a great starting point. In my current job, we have a building authority, which I'm actually, you know, if I'm not here, I'll be the chair, chairperson of life for that after the start of the first, first year. But that was a way for me to help mend some, some poor relationships with the townships is being part of that board. Some of the tools that you can use, you can have joint meetings with your township. And sometimes it's good to just do that every so often, you know, not every quarter, maybe not even once a year, but meet with, have a joint session with Williamson Township Board or the Wheatfield Township Board and just talk about, you know, what are some common interests that you have or, you know, what are some common concerns that you both have and work through those. And it's, it's really a good way to, on a formal basis, to get to know, you know, where they're coming from. And as far as the, was it community organizations you mentioned? So that's, that's a big part of the, and I'm sure there's a first 90-day plan question in here somewhere, but that's a big part of that. There's all the meetings that you're required to go to, obviously with council, but then, I mentioned this the last time, you have to make time to go to those. You have to go to Rotary, you know, you have to go to Kiwanis. You have to, I'm not sure, I know you have a great relationship with the school and the school board. I don't know if that's formalized with like a liaison from council, which is, that's a thought, you can, you can do that. But also, you know, for, for myself, one of the first things I'd wanna do is go to a school board meeting and on a formal basis. But then establish relationship with not just the superintendent, but also the, you know, the principal of the schools. Make sure that they have a, they know the people that work here. I know the, the police chief is, you know, a Williamson native, so I'm sure he has some, some great connections with those folks already. But it's really just making yourself available.
Great, thank you.
It's the 98 question. If you're offered an exact position of city manager, what will your first three months look like? In city words.
Did you think these questions...
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's all of the, the informal meetings that you have to have and, you know, and that's the one-on-ones with your staff and really to vet out, you know, is there anything that, and again, the beautiful thing about the internet or being, you know, live on re-podcast TV is you can find out a lot of information, but if there's something that, that, you know, I haven't come across yet, that there's a major concern, and that's okay. I mean, I don't, there's nothing here that's gonna, you know, scare me or scare me in a way, but that's gonna be uncovered in those meetings. It's meeting with all of you one-on-one, getting to know you, getting to know, you know, what, what you think are priorities, but be mindful that, you know, this is a, this is a collective effort. Making sure folks know that, you know, it's, it's great to communicate one-on-one, but it's really, and there's times when that's appropriate, but it's really best when we communicate collectively, I mean, within the guidelines of the Urban Leaks Act, of course. So it would be having those meetings, it's, again, this is budget time. I have a pretty good handle on your budget where you're at. It's just more of the, you know, the, if there's some nuances that I'm not totally familiar with, but you have the same VSNA software package that just about everybody uses, so, you know, that, that doesn't concern me. You're in good financial shape, which is certainly, you know, that helps. So, but those are all part of the, you know, the first 30 to 60 days. And then it's going to, obviously, the meetings that you're required to go to, but the few, the handful that, you know, maybe the city manager hasn't historically gone to. And it's not to be there and dominate the discussion, we just say, hey, you know, I'm here, thank you so much, it's great to meet you. You know, anything that, that you need from the city that you haven't gotten. And it's, you have a very well-run organization here and so, you know, the, the big challenge for whoever gets this job is to... And so, you know, the big challenge for whoever gets this job is to, you're gonna put your own stamp on things in your own style, but it's not to totally disrupt what's already going on. Cause it's, frankly, it appears to be working really well. That kinda goes back to your original question, Mr. Hanson, about, you know, why I wanna be here. You know, I'm not really in the business of, I have a certain skill set I think that would work here, but, you know, not every city manager is good for every community. And I don't have any interest in, you know, completely doing a rebuild. You know, if you use like a coaching analogy. I don't care for Brian Kelly very much, but I understand that $95 million to go to LSU like I did today.
Right, sure, sure. All right.
What is the most important, long-lasting initiative you developed regarding employee development? So this almost goes back to my previous question a little while ago.
Yeah, I mean, so partly it's the, it is the training aspect, but it's also the mentoring side. I did a fairly significant reorganization of Chelsea when I got there. Because there were more supervisors than people doing the work. And so, we had to change that a little bit. But then we also had to encourage folks to learn from those who'd been there for a long time. So, it wasn't a specific, like, you know, codified way of professional development, but it was making sure that each thing that we do, whether it's, you know, water, wastewater, police, that there's somebody that's capable of, you know, serving in an interim capacity or ideally being the person who would transition to that job when that person retired or chose other employment.
So, in regard to that, succession plan?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So are you involved that with different department heads?
Absolutely, yeah. And I mean, you know, and that's a pretty easy thing if you have three people in the department, but you still wanna make sure that, you know, folks have an idea. And the other thing too is, and again, this goes back to, you know, 2007 or '08, when these things were put in place, because, one, we needed it, but we still operate that way. And it also really improved the communication up and down. Cause you can, you can drive out to every site and you can, you know, make yourself available, but if people don't really feel comfortable communicating with their superior or with you, I mean, then you're, you're gonna have a hard time over the long haul. Whatever, no matter what you call the program or how you codify it.
Okay. Every community in Michigan has faced severe financial difficulties over the last decade. Tell us what creative or proactive changes you put in place or would have liked to in order to manage local government's financial challenges.
Yeah, so, one of the, we've really had about the same staffing level for the past 14 years. And that's really most municipalities, unless you're really heavily debt-loaded, which you're not here. I mean, you have some, you have some bonds that are issued. But making sure that your government is the right size. And that's not doing her innovative, but sometimes that's hard. It's hard, in particular in a union environment. But making sure that you're right-sized, you have the right-sized organization. And that really, and, you know, you're, this is a thriving community. It's a, it's a, when I say growth community, I don't mean it's, you know, exponentially going on from, you know, 3,000 to 6,000 to 9,000 people. But you have, you've had infill development. You know, you've had, you've had things redeveloped here, so your tax base is pretty good. And so, the price of government here is, you know, the price of service is good. Utilities are a different thing. But as far as specifics, I mean, that's kinda job one, is making sure that you have the right people and the right staff at the right price point. And then living within those means. So, there were some things in Chelsea that I talked about last time with utilities. We had some pretty significant billing issues. And they were, you know, they were a million dollars up or a million dollars down. And so it was really establishing this extra internal audit process on utilities to make sure that, you know, if there was a billing error for the top 18 or so customers, that it didn't lag, you know, beyond a month. So, there's that. And then specifically, again, getting back to the price of government, we were able to reduce our OPEB liability from $7 million to about $1.5 million.
What kind of liability?
Other post-employment benefits and sort of retiree healthcare.
There's a second part to that question. When you reviewed our annual budget, did anything stand out for you?
I thought it was interesting that you have two TIF districts. That's somewhat unique. I think that, you know, I did find it a little interesting that, you know, the capital assets were included in the line item budget, which isn't, it's not good or bad, it's just a thing. Cause your wastewater budget shows like a $7 million balance, but I think that's facility is not, it's the actual facility, not the cash. But I think the good thing is that reviewing your pension report and your OPEB report, I think that you're in pretty good shape. I mean, that's something that everybody has to be mindful of. MERS are, you know, there's good years and bad years in the MERS because they're, you know, they're invested funds. And if the market's doing well, then, you know, your funding ratios tends to be better. But I think that, you know, what struck me is, you know, they're well-presented, you're in good financial shape. I also think that, you know, there's a, like I just told earlier your question, like the need to have some additional development to help, really to, cause your base services are good, but really look at, you know, what community enhancements can we look at with having additional tax base?
The stabilization and further success of our local businesses is critical to us. In fact, the city manager will serve as the downtown development authority director. What unique talents or experience are you bringing to the table to assure us you are the best candidate to shepherd this endeavor?
Yeah, I've been fortunate, and it was strategic, I guess, in my, I guess, my career path. I worked in the city of Royal Oak, which is, you know, it's a massive place. And it's a great place, has a great thriving downtown, but it wasn't always so. And so I got to see firsthand that some of the development tools you can use in a DDA to make that better. Cause I was there in the late 90s, early 2000s. You know, I was in Dexter for a short time, but another, a great, great thriving downtown area. And I was, had direct DDA responsibilities during the same in Chelsea. So, there's a whole toolkit of things that you can use. You already have your tax increment financing, you know, for the district. Making sure those funds are invested wisely. Making sure that they're, you know, they're, I'll use this word again, additive. You don't wanna just, you know, you want people to be excited about the downtown and excited about the projects. So you gotta be, you gotta pick good projects with good input from folks. Doing infill and redevelopment when appropriate. You know, the hotel right down the street, the Blue Building, I forget the name, I apologize. But that's a great, you know, you think about like in historic preservation, what ways it would look like if that would have been torn down? And be catastrophic. And as someone who appreciates history, that would be a catastrophic thing. So, making sure that, and I know here you're on the National Registry of Historic Places, which I think is the good spot to be in. You know, there's that extra stuff, and I don't think you've talked about that yet. And, you know, that's not, that doesn't work for every community, cause there are some restrictions on, you know, what you can do on the buildings. And that's really, that's a high-level policy decision. If you chose to go that way, great. But I think being on the registry, it says that, you know, downtown is here worth preserving and maintaining. And finally, I'll come back to some specifics, but the services that we provide, like that Williamson provides, to make sure that, you know, the utilities are reliable and they're affordable. Making sure that, you know, downtown maintenance, whether, you know, we just had a little bit of snow. I would assume your DDA pays for winter maintenance. If not, they should be. But making sure that that's done well. And that, you know, parking lots are plowed, the streets are plowed. Making sure all of those space-level services are there and available. And then, you know, it's, there's, incentive dollars are there through MEDC and through the community assistance team. You know, I just read eBlast about a week or so ago. It looks like a lot of it's still tied to, you know, ARPA funds and COVID money that the state got. But it sounds like the Michigan Strategic Fund, which I don't know if you're familiar with that, but we've used that in Chelsea a couple of times. And there's some trap doors you have to get through because, to get there, but we've done that. And we were able to get dollars for different projects. We did a redevelopment project of the library building, I think I mentioned that last time. And then recently got some for the Rockwell Building, which is an old warehouse building. So, and partly it's having that, you know, 17 and a half years of experience and knowing the people at MEDC. No, I'm not chumming with anybody particularly, but we've done enough projects and they know that, you know, if I'm there presenting a project to them, that has a great likelihood of being successful. And we've, we've used those pathways before. Did my ring on the table, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So, District, quick follow-up. So, I was referring back to your, you said Royal Oak back in the 90s, that you were the project manager coordinator.
Correct, yeah.
So that was a specific position. How did that fall into hierarchy with city manager now? How did that piece fit in?
Sure, yeah. Royal Oak didn't have a city manager, or assistant city manager at the time. So, that was, I was the de facto assistant city manager. So I had a lot of those functions of being an assistant. But I also, one of the primary responsibilities, Royal Oak was undergoing a pretty significant municipal building campaign. And built three fire stations, a community center. We renovated the library, built the 44th District Courts, and we also...
So that's part of the $29 project you referenced?
Yeah, yeah, all those, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Lovely.
What's the population rule?
Well, it's probably about 60,000.
60,000.
All right. Economic development and redevelopment can take many shapes and directions. How do you assure neighborhood development is given equal status?
Well, that should be set in your zoning. And your zoning should set the, you know, the rules and the foundation, the rules being the zoning ordinance. As far as, are you talking about balancing out commercial development or industrial development with neighborhoods? Like, yeah, that has to start with your zoning ordinance. And then that's, then in a sense, it's easy, because everybody knows what the rules are.
Thank you.
All right. Currently, the city manager role also has oversight of planning and code enforcement. We have an open, part-time position for an in-house staff planner, and we only rely on outside services for complex projects. What capacity do you have to manage day-to-day planning and code-related questions?
Yeah, and then in my current role, we don't have a specific code enforcement officer. It's kind of a shared function. There's a couple of things specific that, you know, was written in long before I got there. The city manager is responsible for policing sandwich board signs, which is real fun. I'd rather have junk cars or tall grass. But that's really, it's getting to know the ordinances and then, you know, making sure. It's an eyes-and-ears thing. So, even so, in the current role that I'm in, that's, code enforcement's a, fortunately, it's not a daily thing, cause most people are compliant. When they're not, I mean, you know the code and, you know, whether it's me or whomever, you make sure that the process, there's many times that I've left the office and come back and said, hey, we need to, the grass is too tall to add, vacant lot X, Y, or Z, and so we need to...
Well, you got to be in complaint here, like, how many complaints do you get a month? Or how many, can you give me an idea?
Uh, currently, uh, not more than three or four a month. And it's the same, frankly, it's the same folks, pretty much, over and over again. One thing that's, we've had some, you know, winter hasn't been too difficult in Michigan, but we have a, we have a snow removal, ice, snow removal ordinance for sidewalks there. That's probably generates more, more, uh, community fervor, I guess, the complaints than just about anything.
So the ordinance is based on number of inches you have to take it off in so many hours?
Forty-eight hours, yep. Yep, exactly.
So, what's your philosophy on code enforcement, then? Are you a stick-to-the-wall guy, or are you a education?
Education first. I mean, you want people to be in compliance. I mean, that's the goal, right? And there's always, there's always circumstances, right? I mean, there's always a circumstance. There are certain folks that will be habitual offenders, and you still try and educate first before you have to drop the hammer. And if you have to, I mean, you have to. Because at some point, it becomes an infringement on, you know, their neighbor or the rest of the community. Education first. And I think frankly, you know, that the number of complaints or the lack of complaints over time is because we try and be education first. And that can also be part of, I haven't seen your code, but like, I'll take tall grass, for example. I mean, you know, no one should be getting a $1,000 fine for having their grass taken, right? And typically, that can be handled with, you know, even if it's a reminder letter. One of the things we used to have in Chelsea, we used to write $5 parking tickets, which was, you know, silly. Because someone who's a server at a restaurant, you know, 18-year-old, 19-year-old kid would walk out with 300 bucks in cash, they don't care about paying a $5 parking ticket. So all the $5 parking ticket was, it was making people who came to town angry, because they came and spent, you know, X amount of dollars at the theater and X amount of dollars at the restaurant. They went into a shop and they showed up to a $5 parking ticket. So, we were able to change more of a suggestion card-type enforcement for parking. And now we're at a point with parking enforcement, unless it's handicap or acceptable parking violations, or, you know, someone who's just egregiously there longer than, you know, three or four hours, then, you know, we don't really write a lot of tickets anymore.
Tell me more about the suggestion card parking, suggestion card.
Yeah, yeah, it's as simple as, you know, hey, this is a three-hour. We still have signs that say two-hour or three-hour parking and 24-hour parking. But hey, this is a three-hour parking lot, you know, we appreciate you, appreciate your business here, but, you know, be mindful of the other potential shoppers. And on the back, here's a map that shows longer-term parking, if you're gonna be here or work here.
Great.
That's worth it.
I ask because we've just been working on, we have a DDA-owned parking lot that we just redid, did a very large project on it now. They're trying to allocate the spaces correctly.
Yeah.
Different people that want different...
We have parking in good spaces within the district.
Right, yeah. Parking is a funny animal. One of the, in Royal Oak, one of the issues, Royal Oak has this, I'm not sure that the long-term residents here appreciate the number, you know, there's thousands of people that go there in the evening. But it used to be, the parking system incentivized you to go there later. You didn't pay for anything. And you'd have, you know, four or five people in the car and they'd pay like a dollar. And the people who were there to shop or work during the day had to pay like, you know, nine or $10 a day. So, one of the things, I was directly involved in this. We changed that, we changed it. And so we were able to generate more revenue. Because if you're going out with your friends in the evening, and you're only paying $10 to park, that's cheap, and, you know, pretty densely urban downtown. And there isn't all that in parking. The only time you have a parking problem is no one wants to park in your downtown. That's when you have a parking problem.
Great, thank you.
At one time or another, every community will experience a disaster. Maybe a severe weather event, illegal activity by a trusted employee, sudden job loss because of a surprise shutdown by a major employer, or acts of violence. Tell us a story of your experience with a similar emergency and walk us through the steps that you've used to manage that crisis.
The first time I was the interim village manager at the time in Dexter, there was a chemical spill about half a block from our office. And we could smell it. And it was naphthalene, which just smells like, smells like Band-Aids. And you could really, really smell it. And so, and Dexter was not allowed to stay out. We didn't have, we used the county as our police services. So, you know, we had to immediately call, go through our emergency plan. You know, call the folks in the county, call the hazmat team, get them mobilized, set about evacuating, cause we didn't know, we didn't know how bad it was. It just smelled, it smelled bad. In the end, it turned out to be not so bad. But, so, that was one of, I guess, my first experiences with, you know, that disaster happened. Because weather events are somewhat predictable. Chelsea's a public power community, so probably five or six times in my career there, we've had, we've never had a tornado. I was working in Dexter at the time, if you remember that. Dexter had a pretty significant tornado event in the downtown. We've had some pretty significant impacts to the electrical system and where poles and transmission lines are down for, they're just down. And there was, there's one point, you know, rolling through town and you looked down the street and like, everything is just out of the ground. And so, you know, obviously you mobilize your forces that you have, but public power has a lot of mutual aid covenants. And then so you start that process of calling your mutual aid partners, communities that are similar that might not have been impacted by the same weather event, and mobilize them, and, you know, you work till the job's done. So, those are two, you know, one very specific, and, you know, the Chelsea ones are specific ones too. It's happened five or six times. It's happened five or six times since I've been there. Fortunately, I've not had any specific, you know, issues of workplace violence that I've had to deal with. I did, in, in Royal Oak, we did have a situation. That was shortly after some issues at the post office there. And, and we had an active shooter in our, in our building. And so I had to speak to the person in the hallway. I didn't, I didn't know at the time, at the time he threatened violence on our treasurer or successor and had come up to the, the second floor, just kind of, you know, out of it, I guess. And so I was speaking to the, the individual and then fortunately, we, we did have on-staff police department and they were able to come over and, and he did go quietly without any, any incident. But, so, that was, that was a... I don't know how I would handle that as a fifty-some-year-old with, with kids now. It was kind of a different time for me, but, um, so that was a, that was a, that was an experience. Like you said, there's not too many things that have, that can happen in municipal governments that I haven't seen. And, and finally, right when I was coming on to the city of Chelsea, the, the police chief and the fire captain had, had, had perished in a helicopter accident. And so I had to be there to, and I knew both of those, I knew both of those individuals. You know, I was in the, working with me next door, so dealing with employees and the grief process for that was, uh, that was a significant challenge.
That's kind of like an event, isn't it?
Yeah.
Wow. Um, just a quick follow-up on that. You said in Dexter, the chemistry was still there. You said we mobilized, we called, so, how many people were on your staff there?
Uh, seventeen.
Oh, so.
I say we a lot, but it usually means a high, it didn't matter.
Okay. What intergovernmental or regional cooperation efforts or agreements have you championed in the past? Like a 425 or something like that?
Sure.
Well, you tell us about these endeavors. Can you highlight how you join forces without losing your own community's autonomy or unique identity? And how do you measure the effectiveness of an agreement once it's in place?
That's a big question.
Yes.
So, um, the... There's some are here, I mean, like with the, uh, the Regional Fire Authority and then we have a Regional Building Authority. So that's sort of natural towards, you know, building sort of trust and cooperation with the surrounding townships because it's Chelsea and then, you know, the, the five townships surround us that are part of both of those entities. So it's working through that, through those groups and making sure that, you know, you have a good charter for each of those groups and making sure that the, the rules for each are upheld and that you have adequate representation on, on both of those boards. So there's that, that's not forget on the formalized basis. Well, in, in the, in the last five years or so, the, the townships have been more interested in, in, in looking at 425 agreements. And so we, we've started that process in Chelsea with Sylvan Township and Lima Township. Primarily, Lima Township doesn't have any utilities. They, they don't provide those. And so they have some, some development that they would like to see. And so we, we've had a, you know, the beginnings of a, of a joint. We don't have an established joint planning commission. That, that's been talked about a little bit. But we, we've had, you know, a number of joint meetings with the township about working together on, on a particular piece of property that's immediately adjacent to the city, city boundary and utilities are available. One of the things that, that sold it out was COVID, frankly. And then recently, when, when I came on in Chelsea, Sylvan Township has their own water plant and they have their own, they don't have a wastewater plant, but they have a wastewater...
Leakage system?
Uh, they, well, they have an agreement with Leomond Township. It's really just a series of dryer pumps that, you know, they send their waste like sixteen miles. Probably not the most efficient system, but it's not ours. But one of the things we did, there was, there's an area just west of the city boundary that is, is undeveloped and it's in a difficult spot. It's, it's under a railroad track and across the creek, so it's a difficult spot for us to provide utilities. So this is something that we put in place, two thousand and seven, was a franchise agreement with the township so that when that property would develop, they would be the provider of utilities because they already had those plants. And that, that would be a win for them because it would add some users to their system. It'd be a win for us because it was, it's a very, very, it's a, you know, everything's doable engineering. It's just, it's the question of the, the dollars available. And so that actually, that process has picked back up again because of the development in the area. So, and it's not a 425 agreement, but it's a, it's a franchise agreement that's had, that there's an ordinance in the township and an ordinance in the city that was created. So I've been involved in a lot of the discussions. Back in Dexter, there was some, as Dexter, the village was in Saddle Township. And so we, we worked with the Saddle Township. There was the, tried to get a 425 agreement, but boards changed and it didn't go anywhere. And how do you measure the effectiveness? Again, it's always the front end, right? Making sure that the agreement is good, making sure that everybody has an understanding of what it means, making sure that, you know, that the, the city, if they're the provider of utilities, that there's a clear expectation of what that looks like. And that obviously, if there's some, you know, if there's some tax sharing with, with the development, making sure... Because you don't have a, it's not a good agreement, if it's not a good agreement, you're, no one's going to agree to it, right? So it's, you know, sort of the, the success is if you actually get to the agreements that, that everyone's happy with, that's, that's measurable.
This isn't really a follow-up, but I'll note that the time is just about gone. And I, I'm looking at these questions on the left and the questions that are in there to wrap up right here. And I like these better than those.
We have to stick to the questions, Terry, and that's okay. So we're going to finish this out. Um, we know that we had all of our other agenda items before we got them settled, so we know that we've got to get them this time because we're going to give that same time to our next candidate too. So we're going to finish that.
So we can run over.
Yeah, we can run over, it's okay. So, and then Tom, you're on question seventeen.
Okay. John, do you reflect on what Williamson has to offer? What would you tell us to capitalize on to set our brand or define our sense of place apart from neighboring communities?
The, the downtown, the Red Cedar River, and your historic neighborhoods. And then also, you know, a heavy dose of, when you're looking at business attraction and, and residential development, the schools, the schools are fantastic here.
I'm going to ask the follow-up question there really quick. Have you, sorry. Have you ever had to do a rebranding of a community?
Yes, yes. We, that was, uh, one of the key drivers to some, some of our, you know, change in economic development philosophy in Chelsea was making sure that we told our story, making sure that we didn't, we, we, we had a committee, like, like most government, you know, efforts start out as, and it was a pretty, pretty broad committee. And, you know, we, we created a brand, we created a logo, you know, something, something like similar to, to what you have here, which is, which is really good, don't change it. If I'm here, we're not changing it. I like it. Hopefully you all like it too. But it's developing, um, you know, the, the specific message. And, and you, you'll likely have to, if you want high-level, you know, professional, you know, campaign, you, you have to engage folks to do that for you. And you're going to have to spend some resources to do that. I'm not an ad person, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
I know what I like and I like what I love.
Thanks.
Are we good?
Yep, we're good.
Williamson has always prided itself on providing quality services to its citizens. As budgets get tighter and staff numbers get leaner, some cities reduce the level of service, others shift the responsibility of certain amenities to the citizens by adding new codes or compliance requirements. What are your guiding principles when weighing alternatives between these two types of options?
So it's, it's service first and you can't, that, that, we're in the service business and you, you can't, you can't compromise that. And, and this is going to sound, you got to figure it out. I mean, and we, we, we're operating under the same general fund tax levy that, that was levied since two thousand and eight. Now, part of that is the, the community has grown, not, not exponentially, but we've had some initial development. But it's just, like I mentioned earlier, we, you set the price of government and you, you try and stay there. You also have enough of a reserve that if there, if there is a downturn, that you can continue to pay for service, the services that the residents need. You know, eliminating a service, if you're, if you're providing it and you've provided it for a while, it's probably the right thing. So you want to make sure you, you make, and, and the community has an expectation for that. So you want to, you want to stay at that service level, maintain the service at all possible. I, I think your budget is, is, is well-presented and pretty lean, but if there's, there's another, you know, if there's a last mile to go in that budget process, then, then say you, you figure it out.
Thank you.
Uh, just a quick follow-up. What innovative ideas have you challenged your departments with to become more cost-effective in saving labor and that, as technology changes?
Yeah, I'll give you a very specific... Yeah, a very specific example. When I got there, leaf collection, full-service community, leaf collection was a bunch of folks with rakes and a truck. And it was very labor-intensive. And so, and we looked into, we called it Dr. Seuss machine because that's what it looks like. And it's a, it's a toe-behind leaf vacuum rake. So we went from like an eight-person job to like a two-and-a-half-person job. So you save all of that labor. And, and the machine was, it's ten years old now, but it was, you know, it was like sixty grand.
So your turnover of respite was worth it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it was way less than a full-time equivalent.
All right. When faced with financial strain, what do you, what do you look to for outside funding sources? What is your experience with seeking out grant funding, funding, and how successful have you been?
Sure. Grants, you really can't rely on grants to supplement your, your day-to-day operations because there just, there just aren't any out there for that. Once in a while, you know, the federal government will have grants for firefighters and, and police officers, but there's a, you, you'll get the money for a time, but then there's a commitment that you're going to keep them, you know, for three to five years after the grant period. And I was successful in writing a grant for that. I know about it because we, we, when I was in Royal Oak, we wrote a grant of that effect. And we, we were going to hire the folks anyways, we were able to add three firefighters, I think it was. But as far as, really, really the grants that, I guess, been most successful is the economic development-type grants, primarily for redevelopment, and that's, that's through brownfields. We, we received a half-million dollars for the delivery project that I mentioned. We just recently received half-million dollars for the, the Rockwell Building, which is a, a where, an older warehouse redevelopment. And it's, it's a brick building, it's a really cool historic building, it's a hundred years old. When I was in Royal Oak, the community decided to, to improve their community center, so we were able to secure a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar Queen Michigan Initiative grant to help pay for the community center. And then the last couple of years, we, we've received two different grants of about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars each for non-motorized pathways. So I think that adds up to somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars, so. But again, they're all, all of those were specific projects or, or specific efforts. You, you really can't rely on grants as a, as a supplement for, for operating. And then when you're, when you're looking at utilities, there, there are, and I, I know you, you've talked about these in some of your meetings, there are, there are funds with the ARPA funds that are available. There's money out there, there's money to be had. And so, you know, the state is still trying to figure out exactly what that's going to look like, but we absolutely, if, if we have, and I think we do here, we absolutely, absolutely want to be aggressive in, in pursuing those funds and making sure that we get our fair share. And I'm not talking about the allocation that you've already, probably already received your first payment, the first round of direct Williamson ARPA funds, probably about four-fifty, I think, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, so there's those. But there's also the state programs like the SRF, which is the State Revolving Fund, or, or the DWRF, which is the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. Those are typically loans, but they're very low interest, you know, anywhere from one percent to two percent. Not grants, but, you know, and net present value of money, very, very inexpensive.
All right, thank you.
All right. Last question before we resume our questions. If faced with an increase in cost of services that will impact the residents and businesses of the community, what is your approach to assure the community that these increases have value and are necessary?
Yeah, you have to, you have to start that process very, very early. And, and you're going to know. And that's why your budget, your, your July one, twenty-twenty-two budget process, if that's an issue, you, you already need to know that. You, you're going to have to know. And then you have to set about communicating with council. And then you, you really, if you have to do a roadshow and go to community groups, explain it. I'm not sure, you know, it's, it's a little different with COVID. I, I don't know how many folks you regularly got attend publicly. We've, we've all talked about with, with Zoom meetings, you get more people than you ever thought possible. But we all know after January first, it's not a possibility anymore unless there's some other legislative change. But, so you, you, you have to communicate all the forms that, that you, you know, you, you have used in the past and, and clearly articulate why you're doing that. And it's to maintain the quality of, of service that we have. Haven't had to do that in a, in a long time on the, on, I guess, on the general fund side. Did have a, a series of pretty significant wastewater rate increases, eighteen percent a year because we were trying to, yeah, like, hope we don't have to do that. I don't think we do for four, the, the net was above.
That just made my, that just made my glasses fog up.
Well, so again, I mean, that was, I, I wish I could tell you it brought people out of the woodworks to complain, but we, you know, we got more people upset about the relative lack of opacity in the garbage bags that we had. So, wow. People, people pick what they pick to be, you know, fired up about.
That, that was going to be my question is how do you break the news to a community when there's a water sewer increase? And so you, you should get familiarity with it, so. All right. Well, we're on our last page. So, fit between a community and manager goes both ways. What do you need to know about a community to determine that you've found the right place to work?
That, that you're, you're interested in hiring someone that is, is more than just a transient, you know, sort of journey person type employee, that you want someone to, to be here for a while, that you trust the, the professional side of, of, you know, the knowledge base that they bring, and that you're also, as a group, you're, you're not afraid to make tough decisions? That, you know, if you have to raise utilities or, you know, you have to do something that, you know, maybe hasn't done before, that, that you're, you have the courage to do that.
If offered this position, what would keep you from, from accepting it?
I would, hmm. You haven't published the, the salary range, but, but I have a pretty good idea of what it is. I mean, honestly, it was really significantly less than, than what the expectation of like a community like Williamson and the population. That, that would be it.
And when are you available to start if you were offered this position?
Yeah, I, I would start, I, I know you have an interim and I know, I know, again, you think very highly of her. She's done the job before. I'm in fairness with my current employer, you know, assuming that, I know you have a meeting on the thirteenth and I don't know if you're waiting to, to then to make a decision. Ideally, it'd be a month from accepting the job. But, but, but I, I want to, I'm going to be clear about this. If, if it's a good fit, I'm offered a job and I accept the job, and even like, you know, I'm just going to pick a date. If, we said January tenth was the start date, it doesn't have to be the tenth. I would be available, the minute I accepted, the minute I signed the contract, the minute, you know, in there is notified by the existing player, I'd be available. Even though I wouldn't be officially working here, I'd, I'd come to the meetings to get a jump start because, you know, this is a, this is a job you live and you got to jump in with both feet. And so I'd be willing to do that. And, and again, the way the calendar matches up too. I mean, I mean, you know, as I said, I think there's folks that have been mentored enough in the current place that I work that, you know, I, I would hope they'd be disappointed that I'd be leaving, but they'd be able to duct tape it together for, you know, a meeting or two over, especially as we're heading into the holidays.
So the last is, what other questions do you have for us, John?
You know, I, I don't have a lot. I mean, I know that your, your questions are very thorough. I think you, you know, frankly, I haven't done this a lot, I haven't had a lot of interviews. You've done a great job, I think, of, of, you know, vetting your candidates, plural, and I don't have a lot. I think, I think I hopefully showed that, you know, I know a lot about your community, you know, both generally and very specifically. One thing I want to hand out to you...
Yeah, bring that up, please.
Just to take a look. This, this just maps to a process that, that, you know, I put in place in, in Chelsea. You, you can keep it. If you don't hire me, you know, feel free to use it or, you know. I didn't want to print a bunch of copies. Yep. So it just gives you an idea of a strategic planning process that we would put in place. And it's all, all maps to, you know, the larger issues in the community and then marching towards the budget process.
Well, John, I want to thank you for being here this evening. As I stated at the end of the first round, we will be in touch. It'll be through, probably Holly again. We will deliberate after we're done with... We will deliberate after we're done with our second round of candidates. And I would suspect that you would hear from Holly probably within the next week.
Okay.
I think that, you know, we might be comfortable with her reaching out and, and those next steps. And it would be, you know, the contract and all that.
Sure.
Once we determine who we would make an offer to.
Great.
And if there's anything else that you want to share with us, you know, our emails are available, you can go through Holly to, if there's any other information you want to provide that would help us in our decision making, but we really appreciate you being here this evening.
My, my pleasure. Thanks again.
Yes, thank you. So we will go ahead and go into recess at 7:10 by minutes. All right. We will go ahead and resume at 7:17. Barb, will you bring in Mr. Councils, please?
Hello, again.
Hello, John, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good, thanks for being here this evening.
You bet.
So we're excited to have you back for the second round of interview questions. And it's going to be the, the same process that we did during that first round. We're each going to take turn asking questions, but we're going to have a little bit more opportunity for it to be a little bit more fluid, a little bit more flexible. So we're going to ask the questions in front of us, but any council member can ask a follow up question for you. So it's going to be about 60 minutes, and we know that we're probably going to go over because these questions can be long answered or, you know, when we, when we ask the extras. And then at the end, we have 20 questions this time, not the, I think we had 22 the first time. And then there's just a series of questions that I will follow up with.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll just jump right in, we'll get started.
I'll just ask.
Yes.
I'm fully vaccinated, had my booster, and I just got 10 days of isolation because I was exposed.
Okay.
Tested negative, I don't have any issues. I'm just thinking with this social distancing, do you mind if I take the vaccine?
Go ahead, please be comfortable.
I just want you to be able to hear me off.
Yeah, please be comfortable.
All right, thank you.
And so absolutely, we're, we're glad you're okay.
Yeah, I didn't get sick.
And I'm going to do the same thing.
Good for you, don't.
And two, you were exposed to two people.
Okay.
On a Saturday.
Oh, my goodness.
And both of them called me that night and said, my, my wife has it, just tested positive. And the other one found out that they had spent the day with that person the day before.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Wow.
I believe in the, I believe in the vaccine, so.
Well, the times we live in. So we'd like to get to know you a little bit more as an individual.
Okay.
What occupies your time outside of work? And I know you said you are working all the time when you were first here, so.
But I do make really good use of my time.
Yeah.
I, my hobbies are woodworking for one thing. For quite a while, I had a second job and that was property management. And I did a lot of physical labor related to that in four condominium complexes in Lansing. I have since more or less not retired from there, but when I took the job in St. John's, I thought that's going to be a little difficult to manage that while not living, living in Lansing. So, so woodworking, I, I build clocks, I built some furniture. I also played drums, was with a band called The Good Old Boys when I was Eaton Rapids. That was a lot of fun. And I have two wonderful grandchildren that I try to spend as much time with as I possibly can. So that, and then my family, my daughter lives in Howl. And unfortunately, my son lives in Columbus, Ohio, but I do get to see him.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
All right. So where do you see yourself in five years? And what will you be doing that is important to you and how will you make that happen?
I think I told you last time, I don't see myself ever really retiring, staying home. I, I worked in city management and public works management for 45 years. I love it. I grew up around it with my dad and with Fred Dolan, the city manager of my hometown. So it's something I really enjoy doing, and I've never, ever looked back and thought, geez, I wish I had done a different career because it is challenging no matter where you go. There's always something new, there's always something that's difficult that you need to take care of. I don't, I told you about this last time, but when we had a major power outage in Eaton Rapids several years ago with 95% of people without power, people kept saying, John, why are you so giddy about this? This is horrible. I said, because it's working. Our, the plans we set, it's working. Within the first 24 hours, we're back to 25% of the people with power. And we were back to about 80% within two days, and then the last 20% took the balance of the time. But I just love that type of challenge. I don't like, you know, the result of a power outage, but knowing that you've got a staff that can take care of it. So to answer your question, I see myself continuing to work.
We're good. Number three. How do you stay current with your role as a municipality leader, city manager? Do you belong to any professional organizations? Have you participated in professional development, continuing education opportunities, and so forth?
Certainly. I keep active because I've, I've been in a number of towns and I have a number of experts that I've worked with in previous years that I have a lot of faith in. I follow their careers, I know what kind of challenges they've had since I last worked with them, so I rely on them a lot. I taught in Portland, is, is a good resource there. I have a number of attorneys that I've worked with over the years that I have a lot of respect for. I'm active with MML, I keep in contact with MML. And I also keep in contact with the state, state reps. As far as continuing education goes, I did get the Public Services Institute at Central Michigan a number of years ago, which I thought was pretty rewarding. That was a week at a time for three years in the summer. And it was a very, very valuable program that I think I still have benefits from today.
So you remember the MML?
Yes.
Okay. Simple but straightforward. Where do you want to start?
I hope you remember, but this has been my gold job for a number of years, ever since I first went to Folks Row back in the eighties. It just seemed like anytime it's been open, I was in a position in the town where it would not have been conducive for me to leave. And so when I saw this come up, I thought I'd get to apply. This is, I'd love to stem, I really do. There's just something fun about it. It's, you know that the people are kind. I'm sure you have a number of people in town who like to complain, but I also see that as a challenge to win over the naysayers. So I, I just see this as a very little town, and I really love the opportunity to work here. And I can't express that enough without seeming too.
That's okay.
Too corny. I love this town. I really wanted you to know that.
Town is kind of corny.
Yeah, okay.
We, we love it.
I have, I just have a house full of antiques that were purchased in Williamson. If I had the job, you'd probably see some of the stuff show up in my office, so.
Very good.
Is that me?
Yep.
Sorry, I lost track.
Good, sorry.
Run five.
All right. Have you ever been terminated or asked to resign? Tell us about that.
You know, this recent one in St. John's, they were working on a four-year program. And we came to the four years. I really felt at that point that I had accomplished everything I'd set up just to, to accomplish. And we agreed to not renew my contract. And it was a little difficult at first because I thought to myself, am I being terminated? No, this is just as much my choice as it is theirs. They want a manager that can come in and be what they call the visionary, which is certainly something I've done before. I did it in Eaton Rapids, I did it in Franklin. But St. John's, I didn't see as being necessarily ready for that. I'm not being critical of them, but I think they were trying to move on to somebody that would allow the department directors to do their job every single day, not get involved and sit back and think about all the cool things that could be done. I don't exactly, I, I believe that you need a hybrid of that. And so, yeah, I, I left St. John's and I, you know, I'm, I'm not working now. Fortunately, I'm in a position financially where I could make it until I would maybe want to retire, but I don't want to retire. So that's why I'm working. And again, when this came up, I could be fully retired if this job came up, I'd apply. But I'm not fully retired, so.
So there is a follow up right into that question. And your situation sounded like a more of a mutual decision, so I don't know if it specifically applies, but let's ask it. Through that experience, what did you learn about yourself and how did that experience change or shape your current management style?
You know, what it did is it made me reaffirm in my mind that my management style and my abilities are where I want them to be. I think in this business, you know, Dan told me this years ago, he said, you're going to be well into your career before you wake up one morning and you say to yourself, hey, I really know this job. And I'll never forget, I, I walked into Franklin's Village Hall, this is probably 14 years ago now, and something had happened and we had taken care of it the day before, and the staff was waiting for me, and they said, it worked exactly the way you said it was going to work. And I had that aha moment. And so I thought, okay, yeah, I know what I'm doing. And I just feel very comfortable about it. I like the, the peer check I, I took by getting involved in engineering public works before I got into city management. Did a lot of code enforcement, did planning, did community development, I've done budgeting. I've had experience in every area. So what this reaffirmed in my mind is the person that they wanted in St. John's four years ago was the person they got for what they wanted at the time. And I set about to have these three or four goals, got them accomplished. Obviously, the, the bringing of the cheese factory to, to St. John's was critical, is the largest development in Michigan in probably 40 years. The water revenues alone, even if they never collected a dime taxes, the water revenues alone are paying for their water and sewer upgrades. No problem with that at all. So I, you know, I see that as something that I accomplished. We also had a serious problem in our solid waste management. The ranger was handling it, had a good contract, came to me on day, he says, do you know that not one load of recyclable material collected in the street has ever gone to a recycle center? And I said, well, 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 time out. I've been here three months. When were you going to tell me this? I said, how far back does this go? He said, since you started, that we're within the city, started, which had been probably 10 years, I'm thinking. So we, we collect recyclables at the curb and they never go because of contamination. The problem was, is they were using a bag system, which is fine, but people found that when they had something that large that they wanted to throw away, it didn't fit in the bag. Or it poked a hole in the bag. And then they thought, well, now what do I do? So they would throw it into the recycle bin because that was actually a curb card. And their thought was, well, it's a vacuum cleaner, it's made out of plastic. It's recyclable. No, it's not. And so enough of that goes into the, to the thing, and pretty soon, you know, it just don't go. So we went to a curb card for both. And within the very first attempt, and that goes back 17 months now, not one load has not gone to the recycle center. So 100% turnaround in that. And I'm pretty proud of that.
That's good.
Something pretty significant. So that, and I think normalizing the relationship between the city, the DDA and PSD was something else that I set about to do because I've always had a good experience and a good relationship with the downtown merchants. And when I got there and I felt this tenseness every time there was a meeting, in fact, the first three or four meetings, I was the peacekeeper. I, I just couldn't understand. I'd have to stop one group from fighting with another group in the meeting. I said, folks, this is not how this works. So I think the normalization of the business, and I think I told you last time, that there's 25 new businesses in the last two years. So to bring 25 new businesses to downtown during COVID, to me is even a bigger success than landing in Cheeseburg.
Thank you.
If we can call, if we call on the people who have worked with you over the years, what will it tell us about you?
I'll point to one person in particular, that's Christie Renneke. She was the city clerk in Eaton Rapids. And when I went and interviewed there, I walked in the room, she looked at me, I looked at her, I just felt like there was a connection there. And I ended up getting that job that afternoon. And I was there about two weeks, and I walked in her office and I said, do you remember my interview when I walked in? And she goes, we bonded? I said, that's exactly what I was going to say. So I think you would probably hear from Christie that, and I'll be proud, she, she commonly says that I was the best manager she ever worked with. But I think you'd, you hear a lot of good things from her. I think you hear good things from every place I have worked. Franklin, Eaton Rapids, I think there are people in downtown and St. John's who feel I did an excellent job. I think even if you could dig up somebody back from Marine City back in the eighties, I think they would recognize the turnaround that their public works department took while I was there during a very bad recession. So I think for the most part, you would hear good things. It's not to say that there are people who were not happy with me, because let's face it, being city manager is a lonely job. And a lot of people don't like you because of the title. They may have never met you, they wouldn't even know you on the street. But because you're the city manager, because you're the tax guy, because you're the no man, the guy that says no to the public, there, that tends to happen. So you, you could probably call somebody and say, yeah, he was a jerk. But if you dig down into it, you'll find out that they violated this rule, they violated that rule, we gave them two chances, the third chance, straight three are out, and they got a penalty, and they got sort of fined. So that's typically where you're going to find negative.
Sure.
From what you've learned about us, what do you think our two biggest challenges will be in the next three years? How would you tackle them? Who would you involve? And what processes would you follow?
I think right off the bat, I understand that you've got problems with water and sewer and needing upgrades and data system. My first step would be to figure out where you stand in the community, larger community as far as your water sewer rates, to see if a utility bond would work, a revenue bond. If that was the case, I think that would be the first thing I would take on. It sounds to me like you consider that to be your number one issue. And I'm no stranger to that. When I was in Marine City, we had a lot of four inch water mains. They are a nightmare. Not only because you don't get good pressure, you don't get good bond, firefighting capacity, but you can't repair them anymore and they have to be ripped up. And the thing is, is you have to time them so that you're not replacing them and then having the roads rebuilt five years afterwards or vice versa. You've got to do them in the right order. And so I think that, that would be my first thing is to come up with a CIP plan for both water and sewer upgrades as well as the street program. I don't see any other problem, and we didn't discuss any of the problem, but if you have something that you think to be number two, I can certainly address that. But I think every community could probably get some value out of better code enforcement. When I say better, I mean more consistent before it gets out of hand. Because I've been in communities where it has gotten out of hand and it was because nobody wanted to be the bad guy. And so if that's an issue, that's something I would definitely take on.
So a follow up to that would be, are you more in favor of complaint based regarding code or enforcement of code?
I've done both. And you have to do enforcement, but you can't do it like the Gestapo. You can't just go in and, and, you know, start writing letters. You have to identify those places, you've got to make contact with the people, find out what your situation is. Oftentimes, you're going to find people who, maybe a single mother, a single father, somebody might have lost their job, and they just don't have the time or they don't have the money to take care of it. So you work with them instead of, you know, you see a problem, you send a letter. No, you make a phone call and try to work something out. And your last resort is that, that letter and then the follow up after that. So I, I doubt, I understand complaint based, but it makes it so that there are some neighborhoods where people wouldn't complain because it's the, what do you want to say, the culture of that neighborhood. I had a situation a number of years ago in Eaton Rapids where we took somebody to court, it got so bad. And the judge actually said, I drove through that neighborhood, that's what that neighborhood is like, so I don't understand the city position. I don't ever want to be in that situation again where something has been allowed to get to a point that nobody cares. And then you're, you're tripled up on, on the efforts that you need to take. So I think that certain amount of patrol, if you will, and a balance of that and complaints, but then to handle it with a human touch as opposed to an enforcement touch. A lot of places use the police department. I don't necessarily like that. I don't mind that if they see something, they fill out a form and they send it to City Hall, but I don't want a police officer necessarily going to somebody's door.
Thank you.
All right. How will you strengthen relations between the city of Williamson and the surrounding townships and service organization?
This is my favorite question, it doesn't come up very often. When I worked in Brighton, there were four townships that surrounded them, and it was When I worked in Brighton, there were four townships that surrounded them and it was ugly. I'm surprised it didn't turn into a war. So you really have to respect where the townships are coming from. I used to say to myself that I would never work for township government and ended up working for Meridian Township and that was the longest I've been in any one place. So it was interesting. I liked it because I learned how they think and I understand what their desires and their needs are and I understand the difference between city desires and township desires. But I also recognize that people don't recognize where the property lines are, where the border is. You folks are the only ones that do that. The professional staff, the commission members, the township board members, they're the only ones that know this. Residents don't understand. And it's a very common complaint to have somebody in the township call, say, why don't my trash pick up? Well, ma'am, or sir, you don't live in the city. What do you mean? It says Williamson, I'm a ma'am. My kids go to Williamson schools. So you really have to understand where they're coming from, what their needs are and how you can work together and offer, not just an olive branch, but offer them some assistance. Do you need water and sewer? Do you need it in this area? We can figure out a way to make it work. Don't worry about annexation, that's a four-letter word stretched out, you know, 425 agreements. Starting to get that same reputation, but if you handle it properly and you treat everybody fairly, they'll work very well. And that's what we did to bring in Glambi and that'll pay the township off pretty well. So yeah, basically, I know how township people think and I don't mean that in a derogatory way. I know that they have different needs and different desires and when you have respect for that, it's easier to work with them. And as far as the merchants go, I would immediately join the Rotary Club, I'd transfer my membership, I would join the Kiwanis Club, I would get involved with the senior citizens. I love senior citizens, I, you know, I bring them coffee as often as I can and make donations to them. So I would get involved with people who are active in the community, particularly the merchants. I would shop downtown, I would trade downtown, I would eat downtown and just get to know the people. And that's, that's the number one way for a manager to succeed. Instead of being the guy that people think is bad or the woman that might be bad because she's the city manager, he's the city... No, you supersede that a little bit. That's that nice new person at City Hall. That's what I want to be.
So you're an existing member of the Kiwanis right now?
Yes. Yeah. And I met Brian from the Williamson Rotary Club, he spoke at ours yesterday.
Okay. If you were offered an accepted position as city manager, what will your first three months look like in the city of Williamson?
Here, here, and here. I would get involved as quickly as I could, transfer those memberships that I talked to you about if they would have me and certainly I can hold it at the door and expect to become a Rotary member and Kiwanis member, but hopefully the fact that I was accepted in those two groups in St. John's, I would hope that they would do that as well here. Try to get to know the staff as best I can, try to get to know each one of you. I would probably send out a survey to each one of you to find out what collectively you're looking for or what you're looking for individually. I think I said last time, I like keeping in contact with the city commission, that's why I do the every two week informational update report, but I also make phone calls when I think that there's something of importance, particularly if there's two members, for example, that are very much into the water and sewer issues, whereas the others aren't so much. I would probably call those two first, let them know there was an issue that came up so that I'm not, you know, calling everybody on a weekly basis unless you want to be too. So I think that, you know, you'd see me a lot, you'd hear from me a lot, I'd want to keep you informed on how well things are going and how the transition to a new manager is going. But definitely get involved in the community.
So looking at your past experience, what is the most important, long-lasting initiative you developed regarding employee development?
I think public works departments are an area where training isn't always provided and on the other hand, the talent in that department is not always recognized. You hire somebody because they're a truck driver, you hire somebody because they're a backup operator, but what you don't know is that they're also a construction person, they're also a carpenter, they're also experienced with water and plumbing, electric. And it's tapping those resources, and I've done it three times now with public works departments, sitting down with the people in those departments initially saying, we're not going to send you to a bunch of classes, we're not going to get you a bunch of training unless you want to go get a water sewer license, that's fine, we encourage that. If you wanted to get a building license, we'd encourage that as well. But basically find out what they can do and give the new job assignments based on their particular talents because I think that, you know, public works employees are the least recognized and they are the most important. And I've said this before, I love police and fire, I love what they did at 9/11, but everybody forgets that the public works guys were there on 9/11 as well. And they didn't have the specialized equipment, they didn't have the respirators. So today, they're all suffering from those, but you don't hear about them. And I'll tell people that, you know, when a fireman responds to a fire, the public works has already been there. That's why there's water at the fire hydrant, that's why the road is blocked, that's why the tree that blew down the wind there, the gas has been shut off, the electric has been shut off. So I think not so much as retraining, but recognizing what their talents were and expanding upon those. And it's worked out extremely well. One that I like to, obviously the Welcome Center in Eaton Rapids, it was estimated to be $150,000 with contractors, we did it for 50, but it's in our staff. We, when I first got there, it was the height of that recession. We had no money for anything and we had talked about having an outdoor theater to show movies in the summer, inexpensive, something for people to do. And we built a screen with spare materials, some old plywood for 200 bucks and it's still there today, 12 years later, it's still there, still working. And so I think that you have to be versatile and retraining, not retraining, but understanding where the training is, where the abilities are and using that. You not only get more productivity out of it, more efficiency, but you also get a lot of pride. And, you know, those guys and those ladies in those departments like the recognition. They feel better about themselves.
Thank you. Back to me. Every community in Michigan has faced severe financial difficulties over the last decade. Tell us what creative or proactive changes you put in place or would have liked to in order to manage local government's financial challenges?
I think the most critical thing is reducing staffing levels, if at all possible, and not by layoff, but through attrition. And that goes in hand and hand with what I was just talking about, is recognizing what people's skills are so that if there's a position that's not being refilled because of attrition, is there somebody in another department that can help do that? Is there more than one person in another department that can help do that? So I think that obviously reducing your payroll, but without anybody losing their job, but reducing it as a result of attrition, not only saves in payroll, but it also saves long-term for your retirement and your old pep. And I think that Eaton Rapids today would probably be $30 million in the hole. I think they're at 15 now because of the changes we made. We reduced the staff there from 47 to 35 in a matter of, I think, two or three years. And that made a big difference. And the reward was is that none of the current employees lost any pay or lost any benefits. But those employees that were hired in after the fact, the ones that were replaced, were paid 10% less. They had a lesser healthcare plan and they had a lesser retirement plan. And I was very careful about being involved in every one of those interviews and saying to the individual in the second interview, do you understand that when you're hired, the person in the office next to you or the person in the truck next to you will most likely be making more money, will have a better healthcare and will have a better retirement plan than you? How do you feel about that? And every single one of them said to me, well, what you told me I'd be getting is better than what I have right now. So I would be ecstatic about that. And what that means is that anything that the city earns back or benefits from over the years makes it easier for those newer employees to be in a better bargaining position in a few years, not immediately, but in a few years, as things get better financially, to be able to get back up to some of those higher salaries and the better benefits. So I think that attrition and reducing staffing, but making sure that staff is well-trained and recognized for what they can do and take those jobs on.
Did you have any specific instances where you could speak to where maybe automation, new technology that saved labor and, you know, basically got the job done more efficiently so you didn't have to replace somebody, but you made it more efficient so you could use a labor and sewer?
I think that's happened just in general, but I think that municipalities have been strained for numbers of employees for a long, long time. And while private businesses like the auto industry, you know, some of those are private and larger ones, they do benefit from robotics and from technology, but I don't think that it's hit the local government yet. I think it's hit statewide, but the government, the local governments are still trying to bail out from the things that the state has done in recent years that has affected their revenues. So efficiency has to come with actual hands-on versus some new technical advancement. And that's not to say that, you know, back in the day, you had people working 24 hours a day at a wastewater plant. That doesn't happen so much anymore and they can go home and everything runs automated and there's floats in the tanks and things that they call. And basically what you have is somebody come in on a Saturday to double check or to do the daily report. So yeah, I think that, you know, technology has certainly helped in water and sewer.
Yeah, because you've got billing cycles, you can do, you have different type reading systems, there are towers that can do things and...
Yeah, I was just talking to the sheriff in Clinton County. He had mentioned at our Kiwanis Club that they're looking to hire somebody to be only a Freedom of Information Act person to respond to that because the police departments are getting it. I think they have three a day in Clinton County. So I was hoping to sit down with him and help him coordinate that because boy, it's something that I've done in the past and it's getting to be the thing now, particularly with the DUIs. And if a department has body cameras. Now, Clinton County doesn't have body cameras yet, but when they do, that's going to triple. They'll have maybe a dozen requests a day. So I've been working, I'll be working with him to help design something.
Thank you. There's a follow-up portion to that question I just asked you. It says, when you reviewed our annual budget, does anything stand out to you?
I don't know that your budget's really any different than any other small town. You've got the same source of revenue, you've got a limited village. Again, I really want to look at your water and sewer rates compared to other communities and figure out, one, what's a reasonable amount, two, what the constituents can afford. I'm a big advocate of having different rates if possible, that there's a reward for higher use, in some cases, be it industry, be it commercial, or there's a penalty for higher use. And so, you know, having those adjustments not only make people more careful about what they use in their homes, but it also means more revenue to the city to then again help make some of those repairs that are necessary.
Thank you. The stabilization and further success of our local businesses is critical to us. In fact, the city manager will serve as the Downtown Development Authority Director. What unique talents or experience are you bringing to the table to assure us you are the best candidate to shepherd this endeavor?
I created the first DDA in Brighton, served as the first executive director. I made Franklin a Main Street program. Eaton Rapids, I was on the DDA board, essentially the staff director, the DDA director. And was very active with the DDA and PSD in St. John's. PSD in St. John's is probably the most successful PSD that I've experienced and I think that my experience with them has been really good because those folks understand the benefit. Their DDA does not collect that much anymore. Obviously, we just recently expanded the boundaries to include an old, closed-down factory, an old school which has been converted into apartments, and a church that unfortunately is probably not going to remain as a church and will end up on the tax rolls after 120 years. Kind of sad. But the fact of the matter is that I think that a DDA and a PSD is the most critical thing to help support downtown and volunteerism, of course, as well. You can't get anything done. I know, I'm a little concerned that the parade this weekend in St. John's isn't going to be what it was a few years ago, partly because of Bo would, but also because the main person behind that just got tired and they stepped down. And we've not been able to find anybody to really take that on. So now a group of people are doing it instead of, sometimes it's easier when you have one person pushing to get something done. So I think that, for two reasons, it's probably not going to be as grand as it was. But I did make sure to buy three times the lights necessary to light the pine tree. So I'm really excited about seeing that. If it's not been lit up yet, I think that's going to be good.
There's a follow-up to that. Tell us about the most innovative development or redevelopment project you headed and how did you go about getting all the players on board?
It's still in process and that is the concept that I had about identifying lead service lines through electricity. That started out in a trip to Home Depot and in my basement with two dry cell batteries and basically hooking up the batteries to different types of pipe material and measuring the resistance. And when I saw that there was a substantial difference, I called the dean of electrical engineering at MSU and told them about my idea. He loved it and they took it on as a grad student program. And just before COVID hit, they actually had a device that worked. And so now that, you know, I think once COVID is over and they get back into it, I'll see that and I'll stay involved because I think one thing that I could probably do is make it a pilot project right here because of the close proximity. But I think that's probably the one thing that I'm the most proud of and I was really sad when COVID shut it down for a while because the last time I went there, they had the prototype, it was set up on the table and they were measuring the resistance of copper and it was the same 0.6 that I got in my basement. So in my head, not being an electrical engineer, in my head, hey, this works, this is exactly what I saw in my basement and this is exactly what they came up with without even knowing what mine was. So I think that level of innovation was important. I, you know, it's nothing major, but I think going from the bag system to a cart system in town, turning around recycling, because we not only put 150 tons of waste into recycling, we took 150 tons of trash out of the landfill. To me, simple, simple answer, but huge return. So I'm pretty proud of that as well.
Could we follow up on that? Describe for me this thing that measures the resistance of a pipe. What's the purpose of it?
Well, after the Flint debacle.
Oh, the water pipe?
Water pipe, yes. There's lead lines just about every time.
So you're identifying the type of lead, type of waters pipe there is by measuring the resistance of the pipes inside the house or something?
Yes. The way it works is you've got a section of pipe from the main in the street to a stop box at the curb where you shut it off and then link the pipe from there into the house. Cities are now responsible, if they find lead in any one of those sections, they're responsible for replacing it.
Right.
Even if it's on private property and even if your ordinance says that the line between the shut-off and the house is a property, if it's lead, the city has to take it out. So the way this works is you induce electricity, you put the shut-off rod, which goes down six feet to the valve on the stop box and you put it on there so it doesn't conduct there. You put an electrode there and then you put an electrode inside the house just before the meter and then you run it on low charge, you measure the resistance and by doing some calculations, you can actually figure out if it's all copper, all galvanized, all lead or a combination. Because years ago, if a curb stop, for example, shut-off failed, the DPW would come out, they would dig it up, they'd cut a section out of lead, splice in copper, they got everything in place.
Lead and copper to lead.
Yes. Yeah. Or even galvanized to lead. The simplest way is just to go in the basement initially, if lead's coming through the wall, you don't need to test anything. You know you've got to dig that one up. The biggest savings in that is if you've got, I'm just using an example, let's say there's 200 that you think are lead in town, would you rather put electric charge on there, find out if they're lead or would you rather dig them up? These are literally have to dig it up from the street to the stop box, from the stop box into the house. That's best guess, standard residential lot, between $6,000 and $8,000 to dig it up and restore it. So Eaton, I, MSU kept saying to me, well, it's not 100% accurate. I said, folks, listen to me a second. Even if it's only 50% accurate, if it only identifies 50% of lead, that's 50% that I don't have to dig up by handstand. Yep. If you can tell me it's all copper and that works, I don't have to go back there. So you could reduce it by whatever percent of success rate. And I told them, I said, shoot for 75% success rate. Of course, you put that challenge out there with a bunch of grad students, they're looking for 99.9%.
Sure.
And unfortunately, like I said, once COVID hit and they stopped doing all outside programs, um, it just kind of fell off. I, I know it's still active and I think they realize the value. I mean, this is, that's going to put MSU on the map, not only in Michigan, but across the country because when we first started working, we found that there's nobody else working on it. U of M was doing a thing of most probable number. In other words, if there's three in this neighborhood, then there must be three in that neighborhood, there might be five in that neighborhood. That, that's not it. Then there's a company in Scandinavia that's using sound, uh, but I don't think that that's had the success rate yet of this resistance, electronic resistance. So hopefully that's going to go forward and like I said, I could hopefully have them make it a pilot project here. Because obviously they would charge something, but for the pilot project, they're not going to charge you because they want to know that it worked.
Okay. We are on question 13. We have 20. Economic development and redevelopment can take many shapes and directions. How do you assure neighborhood development is given equal status?
Ooh, that's a good one because I think first off, a lot of people will say, how come you're putting all this effort in getting this cheese plant? We earned that a lot. And when I started showing them the numbers and telling them what that was going to bring in, what the plans were for that in the future, they were a lot more palatable to us. So I think that, um, let's face it, if you don't have a nice community of homes, you're not going to have a nice community. You're not going to have the development come there if the town appears to be run down or if it appears like the local government isn't handling things. You want your community to look the best it possibly can because it's like selling a house. Um, there are people who buy houses because they just want a building, they just want a house. But those that really want the house are going to look at it and they're going to decide if it's worth it and buy it. So I think that you have to sell the community first and make sure that economic development is critical. I had a, um, curb grant, a curb appeal grant in Eaton Rapids. People would apply and they could apply for up to $500 for painting, for, um, new windows, permanent landscaping, siding, that type of thing, anything that made the house look better from the street, they would give them up to $500. And it doesn't sound like much, but when you start looking at what it costs just to do a coat of paint, it was, it was pretty attractive and it, it really gained some popularity with the citizens. So I think that economic development can take different forms, especially in the residential area and just promoting, like we talked about earlier, um, promoting, working with people to help them make their homes look better.
That was a grant then, not a loan?
It was a grant from the city.
Thank you.
U of M?
Currently, the city manager role also has oversight of planning and code enforcement. We have an open part-time position for an in-house staff planner and we only rely on outside services for complex projects. What capacity do you have for managing day-to-day planning and code-related questions?
Um, I've done code enforcement in just about every city I've worked in. I was in charge of the planning commission in the majority of the times I've worked in. Um, so I think I've got hands-on experience in both those areas, um, having worked in Brighton, which was the fastest growing community in western part of, or eastern part of the country for a number of years. I think I told you last time, we were actually giving out building permits off of a pad of paper like this. And I, I, that was the regret I had is I didn't hire somebody to do a better job of watching and following through on what people were actually building. I'm not saying that they didn't get quality development because Brighton is really a nice community now. You can really tell that, you know, eighty-five through ninety-one was a real big, um, period of time for them. But, um, yeah, I just think it's, it's important and I've always been very active in the planning and particularly code enforcement. It's not a fun job to do. Um, my wife at the time, when I was a code enforcement officer in Brighton, finally said to me, I'm not riding bikes with you anymore. I said, why is that? She said, because I'm tired of you following lumber trucks and I'm tired of you stopping in front of houses and taking notes. But that's what you pretty much have to do, especially if you're going to take a more active role in it, you know? And then obviously she didn't like when I stopped and talked to people and said, hey, what's going on and, you know, what can I help you with? So it's not an easy job, but if you do it right, it can be extremely rewarding, especially if you come across somebody who has very limited resources and are just as upset with the way their house looks as you are. You don't always get that impression, but they are and they would like whatever they could do to make it better.
Thank you.
Question number 15. At one time in another urban community will experience a disaster, maybe a severe weather event, illegal activity by a trusted employee, sudden job loss because of the surprise shutdown by a major employer or acts of violence. Tell us a story of your experience in a similar emergency and walk us through the steps that you used to manage the crisis.
If you don't mind, I'll go back to the power outage. We had a major windstorm. It knocked down trees throughout town.
So Eaton Rapids?
In Eaton Rapids, yeah. And Eaton Rapids has their own electric departments. And by 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock in the morning, the report was we were 95% down and the rubbernecking was unbelievable. Not only did the residents start driving around town to look at the, the damage, but we had people coming in from other communities and we were besieged by the, uh, the media. And I finally had to say to the media, look, let me get this thing organized, let's get it on a call at 4 o'clock. And we made, um, a number of calls to border water and light, Portland, Holland, a number of other cities also have their own electric departments and we invited them there and they showed up in rolls. And, um, we put together a budget right away to feed them, to house them and a whole understanding that anytime anything happened after that, if it happened in their community, we would reciprocate. And we actually had a better effort than what I saw with Consumers Energy doing. And so I think that just that pre-planning, getting on top of it and bringing in the resources that, you know, you'd already been working with in professional organizations to come in was just tremendous. And I, I couldn't get a truck quick enough to Portland when they had their tornado for Tut and his people to help. And we sent two trucks and four guys helped just pull the brush off the street because there was just so much damage and all the roads were blocked. So, um, I, that's probably the, the most important one that I've come across. Obviously Glambia was all hands on deck. When we found out, we didn't know who it was. We were initially told that there were five places in Michigan and some of them might have been in Ohio or Indiana. We were given very little information, but we knew the magnitude of the projects and we basically, we put a three or four person team together that said, okay, we're going to work with economic development, we're going to work with LEAP, we're going to work with, uh, Clinton County Alliance and we're going to get those folks here. And we worked very hard at doing it and we're really proud of that because we won. I mean, it was, you know, the whole time I had just come from Eaton Rapids and I kept thinking to myself, please Eaton Rapids, do not figure this out, do not get involved. Because I knew darn well that they could have taken away from us like that. Because while we could have, in St. Johns, we could afford them good water rates and give them a tax payment, Eaton Rapids could give them electricity and at a great rate and that would have, that would have smoked the balance. Not to mention the fact Eaton Rapids had 65 acres block, just waiting for that. So the whole time I, yeah, I was really challenged because I was, my devotion was St. Johns, but I still felt a certain devotion in Eaton Rapids, but I couldn't call them. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough information for me to share with anybody anyway, not that I would have. But I really think that the game plan we put together there was, was huge. And, uh, we literally didn't know who they were until the last week and we weren't even sure if they were going to be there for the announcement because they, I wasn't sure until they actually set up a tent and there were tables with all kinds of fresh cheese on it. So, and then when Rick Snyder showed up, thought, okay, they're coming. And that was literally the day that we realized that we had gotten it. And like I said, they built through COVID, they built on time. I don't think they had a single person, thousands working on site that got COVID and they're up and running a hundred, a hundred percent, probably a hundred and ten percent. I think they're better, they're doing better than we thought they would.
So, so the next question.
I have a follow-up to that, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
The Glambia plant, the parcel that they built on, was that privately owned or was it a city parcel?
It was city.
It was city parcel?
Yeah.
Was it acreage on that?
I think the whole project was eighty-some acres, but not all eighty are used. There were some privately owned and then of course there was some township land that was brought in under 425, but the majority of it is on, was city property. Then there was what was called, this was the funniest name I'd ever heard of, was the St. John's Big Ditch. What on earth is that? Well, that's the main line out of town for a wastewater. And it goes through a ditch. And I got to, it was not a big ditch. It was maybe twice the width of this table and maybe five feet deep. I thought, oh, my sewage goes through there. Well, the new big ditch as a result of this development is now probably 40 feet across, 20 feet deep. It's well engineered, it handles the, the, so, um, yeah, it's, majority of it is in city, but it would not have happened if it had not been for working with the township, working with LEAP and working with Clinton County.
Okay. Thank you.
So that sort of leads into the next question a little bit, um, because again, going back probably to the same project, but what governmental or regional cooperation efforts or agreements have you championed in the past year with that? While you tell us about these endeavors, can you highlight how you join forces without losing your own community's identity?
Um.
And how to, and how do you measure that effectiveness when you're also done?
St. John's, I think, was fairly simple because the township knew that they didn't have the resources to attract that development on their own. But they also knew that they wanted to have some benefit out of it, even if it was 15 years old. So we worked with them right off the bat and we laid it right on the table of, we can benefit from this and so can you, let's work together. And it, it worked right from day one. There was never any, that I recall, any tenseness, um, between the city and the township. It affected, what came from that was a group of people who meet every month now to talk about what can the city and the township do together for, for equal benefit? And they're talking about actually joining forces with water and sewer because the township actually has a small water and sewer, uh, system. But the idea is to combine the two so that the city doesn't necessarily have to put up another tower and the township, if they have a large filter coming in, will have the capacity for both water and sewer. So, uh, the end result of that was just a much better working relationship because when I got there, people told me that the township people hate us and I didn't see it. And I think it's because we got right off the bat with them and said, look, we can both benefit and they believed us. Especially since some of the players in the city at the time were new, so they weren't the same names, the same faces that they'd seen in the past that had been reluctant. Um, there were some new faces and people wanting to see the city and the township benefit. Because again, that nobody, the residents don't see the property lines, the borders.
Great. So do you think that St. John's trapped its unique identity then?
Oh, most definitely, yes. Yep.
And the township sees it the same way?
They do. They definitely do.
Thank you.
All right. As you reflect on what Williamson has to offer, what would you tell us to capitalize on to set our brand or define our sense of place apart from neighboring communities?
I think keep doing what you're doing. I, I think I mentioned this last time, is that, you know, Howell gets accolades for painting other buildings historic colors and, and really playing up the, the historical aspects of the downtown. But Williamson did that years before and you're still recognized for that. And I think that you don't want to, you know, there's a lot of communities that are still feeling the pains of 1960's urban renewal, you know, when buildings were torn down because they were old and new buildings were put up trying to look like shopping malls. Well, we all know what happened to shopping malls. We all knew that downtowns couldn't survive. So I think the uniqueness that's here does well for Williamson. So I don't think I'd want to see any major changes. I think the fact that, you know, the Red Cedar Grill went out, but immediately had a follow-in, uh, restaurant within what appeared to be just a few months is phenomenal, especially during the time that it happened. Tavern, it's getting greater views. I, I don't think I would want to change much. I just think that you're doing it right. You've been doing it right for years and I think people recognize that.
Thank you. Williamson has always prided itself on providing quality services to its citizens. As budgets get tighter and staff numbers get leaner, some cities reduce the level of service, others shift responsibility for certain amenities to the citizens by adding new codes or compliance requirements. What are your guiding principles when weighing alternatives between these two types of options?
Keep things the same as best you can. I don't like reducing services unless you're going to reduce it and still provide it for a fee, if that fee is reasonable. One thing that we prided ourselves on in St. John's is there was 13 different types of waste that people got the benefit of. And it was through, um, just a tax assessment, I think a hundred and eighty dollars a year. I literally, literally got curbside pickup of trash, recyclables, yard waste, leaves. There's a special pickup in the spring. I think that you, you find base programs that work, that sets you apart from other communities and you try to maintain them the best you can. And that's not to say that you don't want to learn from another community, that another community is providing a service that you're not. You, you make a phone call and you find out, how do you do it? How is it that you can have, um, curbside pickup of leaves or have curbside pickup of, of Christmas trees or to have a drop-off, say, how do you do that? And then you make sure that that's provided. I think one area that's going to really be affected in the future is police, not because you're going to want to reduce the level of service, but because you're going to have a more difficult time finding officers. My son, uh, studied criminal justice and it was his first year in grad school, he came to me and said, Dad, I'm not going to be a cop. I said, whoa. You just finished four years, your year in your master's program. What do you mean? Dad, I don't think cops are going to be something that people look up to in a few years. And I was really shocked by that. But evidently liberal arts colleges knew it. They saw what was the writing on the wall and he decided to go into, um, another form and that is, um, anti-money laundering. So he really saw that and he learned that in school. But I think the point is, is that you're going to find less and less people who want to be police officers and you're going to find yourself not, just not being able to afford a police officer, but not finding a police officer to serve. And then you have to reduce. So I would, I would want to make sure that we have a good cadet program, the training program, have a good reputation, um, making sure that, uh, body cameras at some point are initiated if they're not already, to make sure that we don't necessarily have, um, lawsuits, that, um, officers are properly trained in working with people of all walks of life, sensitivity and making sure that that doesn't become a problem. So, uh, I, I would not want to see the services reduced, but I want to see services improved within the limits of what you have, within the resources. And that can be done just through in-house training.
Thank you.
Is it me? It's me. All right. Question 19. When faced with financial strain, what do you do to look for outside funding sources? What is your experience with seeking out grant funding and how successful have you been?
We're very fortunate in that there's places like LEAP, um, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, uh, Clinton County has an alliance, I assume that, uh, Ingle County has some sort of alliance, that Livingston County has some sort of alliance, that those are the people you go to first. You don't try to wing it on your own. You find out those sources, you contact other communities, you contact the Michigan Rust Belt, your national leaders, city can say, what are communities like us experiencing? Where are they finding that money? It can't just be revenue bonds. It can't be just a regular tax bond. It has to be a combination of what I'll call free money or low interest loans, or else you're just not going to be able to afford it. Um, and obviously the loss of, uh, personal property taxes several years ago hurt every city. Most have found ways to do that, to, to overcome that, um, but something went away because of that. And the fact that if we ever saw where property values started plummeting again and there's no way to recoup that and your military has to stay the same because of the head leak, you, you run into some problems. So again, you got to get back to maintaining property values, maintaining pride in your community. And, um, people don't always like change. And just because, uh, as politicians or as professional administrators, we think that something's a great idea to make this a better town, if the people don't buy into it, if the businesses don't buy into it, it's not going to work. And so there has to be a good relationship between the two. I know that when we first proposed the Main Street program in Franklin, a lot of the downtown businesses didn't want me to do it. It took months to convince them that, you know, this was for their benefit. I'm not convinced the Main Street program is the best way to go, uh, but it has worked in a number of communities. But again, you don't just push that on people without their buying, particularly a PSD because PSD is essentially, uh, it's not a tax, it's a special assessment. And they don't have to be very expensive, but when you're talking about a mom and pop business and you're hitting them for 275 a year, it doesn't sound like much, but to them it is because they couple that with the advertising that they're trying to get businesses, they're trying to get, uh, business to come to them. And so I think you just really need. And so I think you just really need good buying from the community before you make any major changes. And like I said, I like what I see here. And I'm sure, you know, obviously, you're more in tune with it. But if you were to make me a list of things that you want to see improved, I'd make that my priority, right off the bat.
All right. Last question before we get to the next question. So if faced with an increased cost of service such as water sewer rates that will impact the residents and benefits of the community, what is your approach to assure the community that these increases have value to them?
First off, you have to tell them why. And second, well, you have to calculate the fact that if you're basing it on so many hundred thousand gallons of water in the same sewer per week or per month or whatever, and that's what your actual revenue is, understand that if you change those rates, it's not going to be 100,000 gallons next month or third month, it's going to be 90,000. Okay, it's not, they're going to find ways. And I think that has to part your program. You have to figure out, one, you tell them why it's necessary. What will happen if you don't raise the rates? Two, tell them what the overall benefit is to them. The fire protection, the better water quality, the better sewer quality service. And then, basically, three, understand what the long-term benefit of that is and how they can go about conserving. You know, besides putting a brick in the back of the toilet, there's ways to conserve water. And I think you want to educate the public on what those, those ways are and get them to buy in right from the start. So I think my, you know, public education is number one. First of all, tell them why they have to go out. Tell them, two, what would happen if it doesn't? And three, how do you undo that? How do you lower your monthly bill? Because let's face it, the cheaper water sewer rates are, the more people are apt to quote-unquote "waste water," or allow things to run, allow toilets to run. You know, we had a service club in St. John's, they didn't meet very often. They got a bill for $900 for water. They said, "We haven't been in this building." I said, "We had a leaky toilet." "Oh, that went into it." And I just showed them the stats and said, "Look, if you have a leaky toilet, a person left here on January 2nd, and here's, here it is on the chart, the toilet was running, nobody went into the building until March. So that toilet running is so many gallons per minute, per hour, per day, per week, per month, and that's how you get the $900 bill." Once they understood that, they not only paid the bill, they got hired a plumber to go in and examine every piece of plumbing in that building, because they're not there. And that's, that's the biggest problem, is people who have a building and need water and sewer service all the time are currently there to monitor it.
Well, that finishes up our question, so I'll jump right into the wrap-up.
Okay.
The difference between a community and a manager goes both ways. What do you need to know about a community to determine whether you have found the right place to work?
I think number one, to know that the tax miller rate maybe has some wiggle room, or is obviously doing what's necessary. That there isn't a need to offset it somewhere else. That you have the right amount of employees, because too many employees can cost you money, but too few employees can cost you money as well. One of the challenges I saw in St. John's is they had 37 employees with a population of almost 9,000, or 8,000, excuse me. And Eaton Rapids with a population of 5,000 also had 37 employees. So what I saw the difference in St. John's was when a, when a catch basin needed to be replaced, Millard Brothers was there. "Oh, great, they did a good job." But Millard Brothers probably charged 60% more than what it would cost us. So by reducing the staff in St. John's, you didn't necessarily get a long-term savings. And what happened is catch basins started appearing with road cones over them and not being repaired until the new budget year. And that doesn't look good at all. And that's, that's not good, because somebody's going to drive into it. Somebody's going to step into it. So I think that, you know, just reducing staffing is, is not enough. But I think you need to find the optimal number of staff, figure out how two or more departments can work together, and then make sure that you look at what the diversity is in the skill set. I'm going to say training with the skill set of those employees. One of the best ways is to have a weekly meeting of staff. And, you know, the public works department talks about what their jobs are this week and say, "Yeah, we need a dump truck driver, water department, you spare somebody on Wednesday? Sure, no problem." You know, "Waste water, can you spare some?" "No, because we're, we're cleaning sewers on Friday. But can we get somebody for the DPW?" "Oh, sure, no problem." And so, you know, we went to a patrol-based code enforcement program in St. John's, did not want to use the police department, we found a better way. We had a part-time clerk at the police department, and she wanted a full-time job. And so she works three days in the police department, two days to the code enforcement. But she doesn't drive a patrol car, she doesn't wear a uniform. She wears a city uniform. And so those days, she is just a regular employee. But it's that versatility that, you know, made a big difference and will continue to make a difference.
If offered this position, what would keep you from accepting it?
Nothing. Especially if you said to me, "Can you start tomorrow?" I'd be here.
All right, well, that leads me into the next question. When are you available to start this position?
Right away.
Immediately. What other questions do you have for us?
You know, this, I gotta say, this is probably the most thorough interview process I've ever been through. And I include those that are structured by the Michigan Miss伍body, because they have a pretty advanced type of program. But I've been most impressed here. I think you had good questions. You know your subject matter, and there's a lot of, it's comfortable. I don't, I don't feel nervous at all, I'm not jittery about anything. I feel like I'm talking to colleagues, and I think that's a big, that's a big issue. Very, very big.
Well, we want to thank you for coming in this evening, gentlemen. And I just wanted to kind of, you know, finish up like I did with that first round of interviews to let you know that our next steps will be, you know, we're, we're going to deliberate, we're going to talk. Holly, the clerk, will be in touch with you most likely next week. So, you know, it's still the same game plan. We're going into the holiday season. It would be, you know, a tentative contract agreement if you were offered the position, the background check, all that kind of good stuff. You know, we'd probably look at, you know, a start date of sometime after the first of the year. So thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate your time and everything. We enjoyed meeting you again this evening, and we will be, we will be in touch.
Okay. One last thing I'll offer is if you're looking for an interim manager during the process, or even if you were to hire somebody that's not going to start for a while, I would be willing to do an interim basis for you.
Okay.
I'd just like to get my foot in the door here and be a part of this. Even if it's only for a few weeks.
All right.
Definitely am interested in it. I don't want to beat that, that worst of death, but, man.
Well, we, we love the enthusiasm, absolutely, because, you know, we, we love our city. And it's nice to, to hear somebody that loves it equally as much.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it very much. Good evening.
We will go ahead and do a short recess of five minutes starting at 8:25. So I will go ahead and call us back in at 8:25. All right, so we do have one action item on our agenda for this evening, and it is the city manager contract. I don't know how many of you were able to review this prior to the meeting, because Rachel got it to us today. She did highlight some areas for us. I don't know necessarily if I'm ready to make any recommendations, so I would, I would maybe suggest that we table this. And so I would support a, I would, I would look for a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table.
Thank you. You have support. Thank you. Barbara, will you call the role for tabling the city manager contract?
Brines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right.